Okay ladies and gentlemen, I just want to first of all thank you for coming out tonight. Thanks to all our questioners, you're all lined up and ready to go. Obviously, I want to thank our Lieutenant Governor Nancy Wyman for being here tonight. Thank you Governor, good to see you here. I want to welcome our Governor to the great Pat City, the city of Danbury, home of the Wildest Burnery in Connecticut. I want to share our views. And certainly want to thank him and certainly congratulate him on coming out to the communities across Connecticut, participating in these sessions. Most important thing that all elected officials can do is this, certainly he and Lieutenant Governor Wyman are here to listen to all of us tonight. So, thank you Governor for being here, we appreciate it. Welcome to Danbury before his birthday. Thank you very much. This is not what I want to do, call this thing, is that how I can tell? Alright, listen, it's great to be with everybody. I want to thank you, I'm going to do a couple of things really quickly, I'm going to run through how we got to this budget so that people understand, and then we're going to go to the questions and handle as many of those as we can. The budget, actually you know, I was elected on November 2nd. On November 15th pursuant to state statute, the then-Governor Jody Rell handed me a budget. That budget was $3.5 billion out of balance. That budget under state statute was a same services budget. So, in other words, provide the same services that were currently being funded in this budget, the one that we're now in the middle of, next year would have a $3.5 billion deficit. Some of the reasons for that is all of the stimulus money had been used, and it had been used in ways to replace state funds. All of the surplus dollars, $1.5 billion of the rainy day fund, had been exhausted. And in the current fiscal year, they're borrowing $647 million to sustain operating costs. When I got that budget, I had a couple of choices to make, one of which was to do the same as has been done before, play some games or use some gimmicks, or borrow for operating expenses, which I don't think is the right way to do it, or to present a budget that was out of balance and refuse to admit it, I wasn't going to do that either. So we went a different direction, direction two, which is change the way we do business, understand that there are tough choices, that there are no easy answers, that it was going to require a combination of spending cuts, restructuring of government, and savings from employees, and then, and only then, increase revenue. The budget framework is no new base spending in the general fund. Some people have pointed out that we spend more money in transportation, and we spend some more money in medical expenses, those are specifically paid for in this budget. With those two exceptions, we're actually spending less money in the coming fiscal year than the current fiscal year. We will not borrow money, and the budget is not based on any borrowing of money for operating expenses. For the first time, we fully fund our pension obligation with $277 million. That has not been done before. And it's not having been done before as long as we're in this country. And I said that we will not offer early retirement programs that would further burden the fifth worst funded pension plan in the United States, and ultimately cost us more money than I would say. Connecticut's budget, in this budget, we cut actually $760-plus million from the budget the Governor gave it. We restructured state government agencies, so there are currently in this year's budget 81 separately funded state agencies. We cut that to 57, a 30% reduction, and from that we'll develop additional savings in the years to come. And we identify the level of support or savings that we need from my fellow state employees, specifically $1 billion, and then, and only then, did we turn to revenue. What do we do in this budget? We fully fund education at the current ECS formula basis. To explain that, in the budget that I was handed would have been a gap of $271 billion in ECS because they had used stimulus money as the basis of cutting the ECS money previously. We closed that gap. We don't pass on additional obligations to local communities, I'm not one of the Governors who's trying to balance the state's budget on the backs of communities by simply passing along the expense or the obligation without revenue. We vow to protect the safety net, I believe we have, not that the safety net is unchangeable, but that it's intact. And $130 million in affordable and specifically supportive housing is in this budget. The reason it's in this budget is supportive housing in the long run is a way to save money by keeping people in their homes for a longer period of time, or supporting them if they have disabilities in their own homes, or do rental needs. And then we fully fund, as I said previously, our pension obligations. Median income in Danbury is $68,013. Additional income tax would be approximately $500 per year for that family, that is $9.62 per week, it is $1.37 per day. Additional sales tax based on that family income would be $59 per year, $1.14 per week, or 16 cents per day. Danbury, if we had not patched the ECS hole, I know the Mayor appreciates us having done that, Danbury would have lost the Viennian budget $6.5 million, or over $3 million per year, and that would have shown up in your local economy as unemployed teachers, or custodians, or aides, or additional taxes on the property tax system. We didn't kick the can down the road, we made a specific decision not to do that, to send a message to the business community that we are open for business and we need mean business. The business community, employer community has made it very clear, they need stability and certainty in this economic climate, I believe we're providing that. The longer we wait to address the deficit, the more uncertainty is generated, and as has been proven, the deeper the hole gets. Failure to address past deficits in a meaningful way has led to downgrades in Connecticut's bond rating, leading ultimately to higher interest costs. And I should point out too, that prior to 1975, Connecticut had the highest bond rating possible, we're now in the bottom quartile when it comes to state bonding. Finally, I came to the conclusion that the alternative to this budget would have been a Connecticut that we would not have recognized. This is a budget that I think honors our commitments to our communities and to the people we serve, and is the right balance, but now I have to hear from everybody else. So I, I think since the second one of these, this is the 16th, we're next to last, for a while the Lieutenant Governor has been coming with me to these things, and I want to thank her for that, she runs the microphone, and if she gives you an elbow, that means you've got to get out of the way.
Governor, thank you for taking the time to speak.
Sure.
My name is Bill Beg, I'm actually a fellow Democrat, I'm a local mayor to Connecticut, State Representative out of Danbury. Well, I'm also a ER doctor, I work at Danbury Hospital, I live where you go.
[inaudible]
So, I'm actually ER Doctor, Danbury Hospital, I've been there for almost 20 years, and what I do is I work the gray bear shift, so I have quite-
I'm not sure a doctor should say that.
Do I understand that?
Hey, I just love to speak well with you.
I never went into politics because I always had an issue with political parties. That's why they stuck me in that shit. The fact remains that, when I started 20 years ago, we had one doc, two nurses, and I would sleep at night, it was a great shift. Now we've tripled our staff, we cannot physically keep up with the number of patients we see. Why are we seeing a million picks every night? Because these patients, these people are working during the day, they're trying their best to work their jobs, they have no insurance, and they're underinsured, or they can't even see their primary care doctor, and they use us as a resource. We are the, I, and my colleagues at Danbury Hospital are the final safety net. So my question is, with the proposed healthcare, Medicare, Medicaid changes and cuts, I just wonder, do you think this will affect the safety net that myself and my colleagues and the hospitals here in Connecticut provide?
Well, you know, we've got a whole bunch of information in this single question. You know, listen, we're one year into, the healthcare plan hasn't been passed about a year and three weeks ago. I think there's a lot of good in that package, and I think a lot of change is going to come. I do know that there are some people who are trying to roll back that clock and undo that, or to starve at budget cuts, but I think it's the right thing. For instance, in 2014, small businesses will qualify for 40% rebate on their contribution to employee-based healthcare. I think that's an important direction to go in. We have a legal obligation to serve people at our hospitals, and we have to do that. That's going to stay in place, and my administration's worked very hard to implement all of the changes that this law that was passed a year ago, require each and every year between now and 2014, and then ultimately, to operate the exchange. So I think better days are coming, and I certainly look forward to Connecticut having better days, or getting out of the ditch that we're in. As far as that, I mean, I, you know, I think we all, we've got to find a way to discourage people from using emergency rooms as general healthcare, I think that that's one of the things that's behind the federal movement.
Governor, thank you for taking the time to take my time.
Thank you, thank you to my staff. Robert?
Governor, I'm a senior citizen, I saw your budget, and I care, we must all share the pain. Well, by my opinion, I think as a senior, I'm feeling a little bit more perhaps than some others might be at the present time. One of my major concerns is your reduction of the $500 credit that was given to housing. I heard various levels of what the tax will mean to individuals in Danbury. In my situation, as family chief, my wife and myself, we have a case at the present time where immediately I'm seeing a $500 tax increase. As a senior, retired, retired military, our wonderful governments all fit to not give us a yearly increase for the last two years for Social Security, the military pension has not been adjusted for the last two years either. The prices that you're talking about, and the taxes that you're trying to introduce, I believe are totally unfair to individuals such as myself and other seniors, that quite frankly, this will fall very hard on.
Well, no, thank you very much, and listen, I don't, I haven't seen you in a while. You know, and I appreciate your coming tonight. You know, that tax credit represents about $365 million at its current rate in Connecticut. $365 million is a substantial amount of money. One of the things that many residents don't understand is the way that that's structured, we actually end up sending 80, about 80 million dollars to the federal government, because it is a credit that raises your household income, you then pay taxes on it, so the state of Connecticut is subsidizing the federal government with $80 million by the existence of that credit. On the other hand, I can't deny some of the points you've made, these are very difficult times, and we're trying to find the right balance, and it's not to say we found it, that's why we're doing a tour, that's why we're listening to people at town hall meetings, but I want you to understand the dynamics of the cost, and what happens to about 80 million dollars of that money as well. Having said that, we'll continue to work on this issue, and thank you very much for coming.
Hi, I'm from the ability to have disabilities, so we speak to people here in Connecticut, western Connecticut, people with autism, development disabilities, brain injuries, and mental illness, and we are a part of a very large private provider network here in Connecticut. We believe we are the safety net for your local private citizens, and also part of what we do is solution to some of the state budget issues that you're facing. And as an example of that, a year ago, we assumed operation of the state-run group home right here in Danbury for eight men with disabilities, the home was in bad condition, it did not meet license standards, we only met our standards. The consumers, families, starters were understandably nervous about the transition, and I'm happy to tell you that a year later, the home has been renovated, the consumers are happy, the families are happy, the governments are happy, and the home is well-run, and it's more cost-effective for us to do as a credit provider. So if I turn this around to a question, my question would be, will you challenge the state bureaucracy and private providers to provide cost-effective, efficient, and high-quality services through private providers like the ability to have a stability?
Yeah, quite clearly we will, and we are. Let me say thank you for the great service that you're providing. I think one of the problems with Connecticut over a long period of time is we've not treated the not-for-profit community provider, community providers well, during a period of time in which state spending curves were going up by 6 and 7% per year. Our allocation for not-for-profits and community providers was about, actually was less than 1% today. This budget actually continues the process of supporting and increasing support for the not-for-profit community provider, community if we get this budget through. So, I'm not just using words, I'm actually demonstrating, but I do want to thank you for your work. Thank you.
I have a booming voice, don't worry. Okay, first of all, thank you for coming to Danbury and going around the state and listening to residents in the state, these citizens in the state. First of all, I want to thank you for the leadership that you're showing, I know that we are very tough in some of our times, and you're really showing some courage and some leadership that I wish we would have more. I want to stop for everybody. On that topic, I'd like to talk about the bus path, that's 10 miles long, it's been proposed. I don't think that this makes sense, even though we're getting some of the money from the federal government, would it make sense to return those funds to the federal government and say, now's not the time, let's park this, and we can make smarter decisions once we break the show?
Yeah. The question's about the busway, which is a road system exclusively for buses, primarily for commutation purposes, but actually would run, could run off to 24 hours a day, a system from New Britain to downtown Hartford. The expectation is that that system will grow to carry an additional 9,000 individuals who are primarily using I-84 to get to work. By the way, from communities that are further out than New Britain, but the bus route will change so that you drive to New Britain and then get on the busway, and that's how you get the additional traffic off of 94 of those buses. But, to the extent that we can increase the ridership of buses as opposed to people getting into cars, we believe we can take a substantial number of cars off. It is a reality that 2/3 of all traffic congestion in and out of Hartford in the morning commutation period is in that area. And to add a lane to 84 for instance, would probably cost a billion and a half dollars. So what we're doing here, and by the way, there's no guarantee that we could get that money from the federal government, we haven't been very successful in getting that kind of money in the past, the busway will be largely built with state dollars, it will put up to 4,000 people to work in short order, or the equivalent of 4,000 people to work, and when it's completed, we hope that it'll be successful. It's 14 years in the making, and we decided to go forward with it. At the same time, what we're also going to do is allocate funds to study a rebirth of the waterbury to Hartford rail line, and that's part of that decision-making process, and we're identifying a million dollars to undertake all of the study work. If it indicates that that's viable, then we'll be very aggressive in Washington, going after rail dollars in Washington, which are being made available to reinvigorate that line. I understand we disagree on that, but I just wanted to give you that explanation. Thank you.
Your next speaker is David.
Alright, thank you for being our Governor.
Sure.
I'm Republican, and I admire your efforts in trying to cut some of the expenses. I, as a local small towner, I'm going to say, what, the gasoline price is higher, my cost of food is higher, but we found ways to, you know, diminish the use and, you know, cut our expenses. Earlier today, I was at the state, and you talked about that there's, you know, the same services are provided that we did last year, no new pieces of services, but then, based on what I've seen, the budget from 2011 to 2012 is actually due to a net increase of over $400 million. So, services are the same, where do those increases come from? You're looking for a billion and a half dollars from the taxpayers, which, you know, I speak for myself, I'm half-dollar taxes, all the taxes we're paying, are there any other places to cut additional funds from, from, you know, additional programs that we're offering? How can there be a net gain in the actual expenditure, when you say that the services remain the same?
Sure, and I'll explain, a good part of the whole Medicaid expenses. We are an aging state, we have one of the oldest workforces in America, actually we have the most rapidly aging workforce in America, so that budget does reflect some additional expenses in year two, but I'm going to be honest with you, it doesn't reflect as much money as we're actually going to need. The assumptions that we're building into year two is that by this reorganization that we're undertaking, we're going to identify sufficient savings to allow us to live within that budget. Understand that we're currently living with, in this budget year, budget was designed two years ago. We're going to live, with the exception of some additional money for healthcare, specifically around hospitals and nursing homes, and some additional transit money, we're going to live on less money next year, and quite frankly, doing a third year in a row where we see Medicaid expenses going up rapidly is probably an impossibility, but I'm going to work as hard as I can at it.
Next speaker, Governor, is your favorite Prince Stewart, and that the same Prince Stewart from last night?
We were in New Britain last night, Mayor there is Tim Stewart, that's-
Good evening, Governor, I have a few particular questions.
Sure.
An interview with Shelley Sinwin, you stated that, when you discussed the deficit budget at the time, and you stated that you were not going to be able to tax your way out of this, and my question is, how do you consider the $1.5 billion tax increase in your budget, taxing that way out of this?
Well, what I said is, we can't tax our way out of it, we can't cut our way out of it, the $3.5 billion are now adjusted to $3.3 billion, neither one of those would work. But, you raised a question, so let's then, you know, do what I, I'll do with you publicly what I do every day, I benchmark what other states are doing, I understand and study how they've gotten to the points that they have. If you look at the Governors who are suggesting large-scale cuts in their budget, and you then scratch the surface, for instance, in New Jersey, over two-year period of time, they're switching $3.6 billion of state government expense to local government. That's not a cut. That's, you take my problem, and I get to take credit for having solved it. But, but there's a danger in Connecticut that is pretty profound, and that is that we're already more reliant on property taxes than any other state in the nation. And for many of our largest employers, companies like United Technologies, that has 26,000 people here, the largest tax that they pay to the state is property taxes, because they have these gigantic facilities and lots of property, buildings and that sort of thing. If we start to shift very rapidly, state expenses to local governments, now we've done it over a 20-year period of time, and I'm trying to stop that, but if we all of a sudden did what other states are doing, and shifted that obligation to local governments, and this kind of washed our hands of it, or if I had passed on the $271 million cut that the prior Governor made in ECS, that would have shown up in your property tax. You can say what you want, and a lot of people want my tax structure to be even more progressive than it is, property tax is a pretty regressive way to raise money. If you look at New York State, because some people will throw out, why don't you do what Governor Cuomo did? And I'm not attacking Governor Cuomo, he's leading his state, but we've got to analyze what's going on. In that state, a $10 billion cut, the largest single portion of which, $4.65 billion is represented in the shifting of state requirements to local government. One community in New York State loses $685 million in educational funding. Now, I talked about, under the budget that I inherited, Danbury loses $6.5 million over a two-year period of time, if we didn't plug the ECS hole. So, I've gone a different way, and you are absolutely right, there's only, there's probably only five of us in the country Governors that are doing it this way, but there's nobody who's a Governor of a state that's more dependent on property taxes than I am. And I have been true to what I said, I almost lost this election, and I was willing to lose this election, because I would not take, I would not make a promise which I knew was impossible to keep. Never did I say I wouldn't raise taxes. I'd say I didn't want to raise taxes, it'd be the final thing I would do, but I never said it, and I, and by the way, I was running against a guy, who- Not this guy. Not this guy. I was running against a guy who told me he was going to solve a $3.5 billion deficit by cutting expenses by $2 billion. So, honestly, I think I'm being true to my word, I'm doing the best I can, and I'm explaining to you why I'm not going down the same road that other states are. Thank you.
Governor, welcome to our, welcome to our fine city, and it's nice to see you again.
Hello, she said hello to the Mayor and thanked you, and it's hello to me. Ow!
I'm going to feel two birds with one stone.
Did you read the Dr. Wilson?
Okay, the first thing, first of all, I'm a community worker, I am the Director of the Hammond Resource Center in Litterbury, and I graduated from the Hammond Resource Center here in Danbury Moore Street. We are a volunteer income tax site, it's definitely on income tax season. Sir, I'd like to hear what your point of view is, number one, on EITC, another thing, I worked at the Second Orange Elementary School in the state of Connecticut, Chase School, and we were not happy with results of the national testing for the achievement gap, and neither is the state of Connecticut. Mark and I are flying products at Danbury High School a few days ago, and I am now currently a little worried and concerned for my children that are in high school, so I'd like your point of view of EITC, and what are we going to do about the achievement gap for our next generation?
Okay, you got an hour? Listen, EITC, Earned Income Tax Credit, there are 24, 25 states that have an Earned Income Tax Credit, the average of which is about 20 to 25% of the federal EITC. Connecticut has never had an EITC, and my budget proposal is to establish one, actually at 30% of the federal, no. So, now whether that gets through the legislature, I can't tell you whether it does or not, but I filled it with my budget, so there's your answer on that one. With respect to the achievement gap, I think there are a number of things we need to do, not the least of which is to advocate on behalf of universal pre-kindergarten, something I did in Stanford 11 years ago. But that doesn't mean that we pass on an obligation to a community to have a second year of kindergarten, that's not what we're talking about. What we need to build, and what we did in Stanford, what we need to build on a statewide basis is a program that sees no child deny a year of pre-kindergarten learning experience because of their parents' financial circumstances. To put it, to explain it a different way, you know, when my wife, Kath, and I are raising our family, you know, we can afford to send our kids, and most people can afford to send their kids to an early childhood educational experience, do. their kids to an early childhood educational experience, do. That's just the simple reality. Which means that when kids get to school who haven't had that experience, they're competing against a whole bunch of kids who do. They meet, in fact, a 34-year-old standard. They come to school ready to learn. But the kids who don't have that experience show up not knowing their letters and their colors, or having had a formalized learning experience. In essence, if you study how the achievement gap turns kids out in high school, and the correlation between that gap and the lack of an early childhood learning experience, it's pretty dramatic. So, this budget includes about $6.1 million additional for early childhood educational experiences, and I will tell you right up front, I wish it could be more. In a more robust economy, it probably could be. But at the moment, it's a down penny.
Sir, that's very true, and also, thank you very much for the early childhood cabinet that you're in the process of developing. I think that's great, and I thank you very much. This is the question, though, between preschool, a four-year-old, and a current fifth grader and junior high person in high school, what are we going to do about these kids right now? Because they are quickly our next labor force.
Sure, again, I'm just trying to take, give you, I know a lot of people want, so I'm trying to give you parts of that, but I can't read your mind, and can't be sure what part of the education program you want me to talk about. I got to tell you, in the state of Connecticut, education is a local issue, and how your community decides to spend its money is up to it. One of the reasons I'm very proud of this budget is that we closed the ECS gap of $271 million. I wish we could add one, but we can't. And so, in making the same amount of money available to communities as we made this year, I'm not passing that obligation on to other, to your community to make up the difference, as well as we're finding other ways to be supportive of educational improvement. And I have to be honest with you, I'm going to have a state education department that holds people to higher standards, so those are some of the other things.
Next speaker, Governor, is David.
Hi, David. Lieutenant Governor, thank you for coming to Danbury. I listened to your State to State message on WTIC radio when you presented it, and one thing that certainly perked my ears was when you had mentioned about the state vocational technical high school system, that it's a very good system, that you plan on turning these over to the city with about two years of money, and I could not understand at all why that was even thought of. The vocational technical high school, many of the people here in Danbury recognizes Henry F Technical School, works great, it's an agency that actually works well, I think everybody can agree on that. To try to even tamper with that is a bad, bad move. It would be like taking the, getting rid of the state police and having local police take over the state highway system. It doesn't make sense. I'm a product of the vocational technical high school system. But I can tell you, Governor, that every child is, does not, should not be going to the VOTEC school to begin with. It's not a place where you're just going to make a birdhouse or make some keychains like they have in some other states. They go there for about two hours and learn a little something. Vocational technical high schools here in Danbury, throughout our state, we have about 17 of them. They learn a trade, not only do they get the high school education, but they also walk away with a trade. With that trade, they can create their own business, work for a business instantly, and our taxpayers here, they don't go out to another state. You know, when I, as I graduated many, many years ago, and when we run a reunion for Henry F Tech, we don't have to go on Google or Twitter, we just look at the Yellow Pages, because the Yellow Pages are where the graduates are. That's where the graduates are. So, I have to say, Governor, is I know it's been off, it's on the table for about a year to study it, I was wondering if we can commit it for you tonight, because let's not talk about that at all, let's continue the good thing that the state is doing with the VOTEC system. It's not something that's needed to be studied, you're actually doing something very well now, it doesn't need that improvement.
Well, I gotta, listen, I agree with so much of what you said. But it's not, you know, the quality that you're talking about is not universal throughout the state system. It really isn't. And there are, there are VOTEC schools that aren't producing the kind of results that you're talking about. So, you know, this may not be the right tool to reconnect some of those vocational technical programs that there's in the community. We'll take a look at how to strengthen that commitment on a local basis, and to make sure that local communities are having appropriate levels of input to the schools. So, we'll work with you.
The state's doing a great job, Governor.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to introduce the next speaker, Governor. I'm going to ask all the speakers, if we could please come out, go make a statement, ask the question, only because we don't want to run out of time, we want a lot of people to speak. The next, the next person is Patty.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Patty Keggison, welcome to Danbury. I am here representing over 300 adults who have participated in leadership training institutes here, yeah, in Danbury, the PLTI, the Parent Leadership Training Institute. If I can have everyone stand who has been involved with PLTI. Governor, I wish to say thank you to you, to Lieutenant Governor, for providing the means for us to have the opportunity for this for parents in our city. We have over 300 graduates. Because of the work done by you and Elaine Zimmerman at the Great Connecticut Commission on Children, we have a parent trust fund in our state that enables our local communities to invest in citizens. And so, we are graduates of a 20-week Harvard-level course on civics and democracy. I wish that you would maintain the commission, and so, my question to you is about the, about the commissions.
All right, I, it's in the budget. Don't anyone take the Lieutenant Governor's job away.
Governor, sit down.
There you go.
Fine, Governor, thank you for coming.
Sure.
Governor, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to see you all here in the room. I'm old, I'm old as time. I'm the resident of Danbury, I'm retired, I'm a Republican, with a very strong affinity for the Tea Party patriots and all the good work that they're doing. I will admit to having some sympathy for you, having watched you take the oath of office and inherit a $3 billion deficit. But I'm sure you're aware that six or eight years of Democratic-controlled legislature provided you with that. I also understand that you're looking to the state employee unions to provide about 30 percent of the revenue necessary to balance your budget. The question is, how many of these unions have come forward and expressed the willingness to talk to you about this? How many have just turned their back on you? And if that source of revenue is not there to balance your budget, where are you going to get it from? Thank you very much.
Sure. I don't want to be overly political, but to point it out that the Democrats in the legislature, I'll point out to you that we've had Republican governors for 20 years, and I do, and I do very clear that I don't think that the combination, actually, I don't think anyone's blaming us in this. So, I didn't serve in the legislature, I think bad decisions were made in the legislature, I think bad decisions were made by prior governors, and I'm trying to straighten it out. You asked a specific question, has anyone walked away? No, no union has walked away. We're in discussions, and those discussions will continue. You asked a second question, what will happen if we don't get those concessions? We're going to cut the budget?
Governor, the next person is Scott.
Good evening, Governor, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, Scott. What's that happened to?
Yukon Huskies.
There you go. I don't understand this, Scott, but you notice I got a, and they want to ask a change.
Good, so they'll let it next year, too. Okay, I'll keep this brief. I'm a musician in the community, and I read, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a proposed tax on performance venues coming up in the state of Connecticut. I just want to make sure I'm that correct. Like I said, it's something I breathe, maybe it's not true or not.
An entrance tax, I mean, a tax on tickets?
Tickets, venues, something like that. Now, the increased revenue that supposedly that's going to provide, will that revenue in turn go back to the payments themselves, or is it going to use it to balance other parts of the budget?
Well, actually, it's a fair question. This budget actually puts $15 million into culture and tourism. The current budget has one dollar for, to advertise the state of Connecticut, promote the state of Connecticut. You know, when you watch TV in the morning, you see Michigan advertised, or you see Williamsburg, or another week or so, you'll start to see Cape Cod. Our state doesn't do that. Nor have we kept current and supporting cultural institutions. So, yes, there's an entrance tax that will be applicable, and yes, we're putting $15 million into culture and tourism.
Thank you very much.
I'm a home-owning, tax-paying resident of the proud city of Danbury. 14 years ago, I lost my sight, and with the equipment and training I received from the Board of Education and Services for the Blind, I was able to rebuild my life. As I'm sure you're aware, Besby is the oldest and measurably one of the best agencies for the blind in the country. 95 percent of the students that Besby serves graduate high school. The national average for high school graduation is 68 percent. 50 percent of the vocational rehabilitation clients that Besby has find jobs. That's the highest rate in the country. It's 20 percent higher than the national average, and 30 percent higher than the average for the Bureau of Rehab Services under DSS. If you go to the federal Department of Education and RSA websites, you will find that there is unequivocal evidence that in the 26 states that have consolidated their state agencies for the blind into larger bureaucracies, literacy rates go down, high school graduation rates go down, job placements go down, and annual average salaries for blind people who work go down. According to the Office of Policy and Management, this consolidation plan of yours will save $300,000, or approximately a little less than 8 one thousandths of 1 percent of the state deficit. Quite honestly, Governor, it doesn't make sense to me either fiscally or logically. We want to be taxpayers, not tax consumers. How do you justify your consolidation plan?
First of all, you will be a genuine commitment to people who are blind. I pointed this out on other occasions, I'll point it out here. At the end of my father's life, he was legally blind, and I certainly understand the issue to a very great extent. Having said that, we need to, we have, right now, 81 silos that are budgeted in the state of Connecticut, and there's a fair amount of overlap. And although you're right, the first-year savings is expected to be about $300,000, I think there's substantial additional savings that could be hacked.
Sure.
I also believe, I also believe that ultimately what we have to do is to make sure that those additional savings, as we restructure that organization, is plowed back into service delivery. So, I stand ready to commit to you that we're going to honor that commitment. By the way, a lot of that commitment is based on individual laws that require the state to provide services, and we're not changing those laws. So, we're going to continue to do that. I understand there's a disagreement, but you know, I've got a $3.3 billion deficit, and that deficit doesn't get much smaller the second year unless we address that issue. It'd be about $3 billion in the second year. So, what we're doing is trying to find savings where we can, when we can, and we're trying to build savings, not just in the first year of that budget, but all subsequent years. But we're going to honor our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sabina.
Governor, how are you? Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I just have a follow-up question to actually, because I'm a parent of a 16-year-old daughter who's blind, who's now attending in town high school, and she's getting ready to get herself ready for college, and she just wrote her SATs, so she's quite independent. She's been using the Besby services since she was about four and a half. Make my long story really short, 2007 to 2010, we moved to Ontario Canvex, my husband is doing a fellowship there, and the model that you're proposing for Besby is exactly the model that they were using. And what was happening was the fact that, as much as your commitment, I know is for the blind, and I do not, I, from my heart, know that, it's just that practically speaking, I see that it does not work, because the local schools are not prepared when these services are put out like that. We actually had to send her to the school 30 minutes away, because that was the only school that would take her, a local school would not take her. I actually had started introducing sort of the Besby principles to the school boards, they were very excited about what I had to bring, and they started implementing those. And because of my involvement with that, I was actually appointed by the Minister of Education at the time, on to their advisory committee to help with all of that. Bottom line really ends up being, is the reason that I actually moved back, because I'm going to give a wonderful job in Ontario, was because I knew that when I moved back, the transition from high school to transition from throughout her life is going to be pretty seamless. There, I was fighting for every single tiny thing, even to have her able to go on her desk at the time of the other children. I knew many students that fell through the cracks, and I'm only telling you this because it's really, I lived here for three years, it was probably the most frustrating three years of my life. Bottom line really, I know your commitment is to the blind community, I know you're looking at services not changing, but practically speaking, it does change as much as you think it won't change. I don't see how you can guarantee that these services will not change, how we can have seamless services from a child that's born to without life. Their services are so specialized, so nearly, the number of blind people are so few, I just really, I really question that, I highly question.
First of all, I want to thank you for sharing your story, and thank you for your hard work, and the active order, and her success, and I heard everything you said, and I take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I have my back to you, but the way that it was set up, I got to look this way, so I do apologize.
Cindy.
Hi, Governor, thanks for the opportunity.
Sure.
The Department of Revenue Services issued a report that states two-thirds of the companies making money in Connecticut in 2008 paid no corporate tax. One big example, of course, is Bank of America, whose CEO last year himself made a bonus of $9 million, and there's been no contribution to the state of Connecticut. I know that you've said that you're concerned that corporations and the super wealthy may pick up in roof if asked to contribute more in taxes, but my question is, is how really is this a shared, fair sacrifice for everyone involved? It seems that the middle class is really just being trampled upon.
Well, you know... First of all, let's be very clear, the reason that two-thirds of the corporations don't pay tax is they are a subchapter S corporation. So, when you use that number, which means they pay their tax through their owner's personal income tax. So, when you use that statistic, it's really not telling the truth of the whole story, because most corporations in the state of Connecticut are very small, and they're set up for a specific purpose. If you did catering, and you were a single employee, you'd probably be a subchapter S. You want to be a corporation, ensure that you don't lose your house if there was something that went wrong, but you're paying a tax, and you're paying a tax on the income. With respect to Bank of America, listen, I'm not defending Bank of America. There is reality that they paid a tax when they made money. You're picking a year where naturally they didn't make money, they actually lost a lot of money, and that got passed on to a number of states, and that got passed on to a number of states, not just Connecticut. But if you go back the year before, they paid taxes, and I'm betting that they're going to pay a fair amount of taxes this year, because they're doing pretty well. Now, you can also then talk about a national trend. At one point, in the 50 states, about 30 percent of state revenue came from corporate income tax. And the average in the United States has shrunk very substantially, yeah, somewhere in the lows or mid-single digits. That happened because states decided that, A, they wanted to compete with one another, but B, they were seeing a fair amount of jobs move elsewhere, and they thought that was a good way to compete. Now, our tax structure is very much benchmarked on the corporate level against the states that we compete with. We compete geographically, most with Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New York, and New Jersey, and then, of course, the other 45 states, and then apart, of course, every... country, and 18 percent higher than the rest of New England. So, what I try to do, what I'm trying to do, and we can argue whether I'm doing it properly, I understand that, is find the right balance, so that we can start to grow jobs in the state of Connecticut again. And if we raise corporate taxes on a United Technologies, for instance, they just closed a plant in Cheshire, remove those jobs to Georgia and Singapore, we start to do, we start to make single decisions on our own part as a state, and we further damage what's left of the competitive advantage that we have, or we go to a situation where we have no competitive advantage, then we're going to repeat in the next 22 years what we've done so successfully the last 22 years, which is to lose jobs. There are only two states in the nation that lost jobs in that period of time, Michigan and Connecticut. And Michigan actually retained a higher percentage of their jobs than we did. So, we've got to change that trend, and we've got to benchmark our tax system. And I'm willing to have conversations with members of the legislature and anybody, but understand that that's what I'm trying to do, that's the context in which we're trying to get this thing going, that's the context in which we're making these decisions, which is not a decision, it's a recommendation. Thank you.
Hi, Governor.
Hi.
I'm Zevan Happ, I'm a pediatrician in New Milford, whose practice has proudly served our Medicaid patients in the region for over 20 years. I'm currently the president of the medical staff at New Milford Hospital. The composed-budget hospital tax stands to have New Milford Hospital losing $1.6 million and Danbury Hospital $5.4 million. The hospital tax, I understand, is very disproportionate, as some hospitals stand to be more negatively impacted, such as ours, than other hospitals in the state. Not only does, well, the hospitals be negatively impacted, but the communities we serve as well, from the standpoint of the local economies, and I think also ultimately increase the cost of healthcare. My question is, can you sit down with hospitals and physicians to come up with an alternative to the tax, or at the very least, that you are equitable for?
Sure. Thank you for the point. As you know, most hospitals actually get more money than that. A lot of that has to do with the amount of Medicaid and unreimbursed treatment that those hospitals make. I think that there's a later run with respect to Danbury, where actually Danbury ends up getting more money, based on their having corrected some information previously supplied to the state. So, before we throw the bathwater out, we might want to check whether that's right, but I'm, I've been led to believe that the most recent runs actually show Danbury gaining money. I don't know with respect to New Milford standing here, but I'm sure we can run those numbers. And having said all of that, we've got a $3.3 billion deficit, so we're trying to have a system that taps into all of the federal revenue that we can get, and by having that tax, we will tap into a substantial amount, additional amount of federal revenue.
Okay. Hi. Thank you for taking the time to answer my question. I'm going to make this a quick summary.
Okay.
First of all, I want to say I'm Rachel Lohler. I am the statewide Secretary of People's First, which is an organization that helps people with physical and mental disabilities. People with disabilities are still the most neglected minority in this country and state, and I know from personal experience that there are many people with disabilities that rely on staff and job coaches to get themselves to work and to do other daily activities. And I think we are able-bodied, we don't really understand, from my experience, what, how hard the daily activity is for us to do, and we just want the same, we have the same wishes and dreams as other people in the able-bodied world, and I just wanted to let you know that. And my question is, what are you going to do, because we're supposed to have our, we're supposed to have our funds cut, and there's so many people with disabilities that still need help, and the transportation is a very serious issue, because most of us don't drive.
Thank you. I want to thank you for coming out and taking the time to speak to us. I don't know the specific cuts that you're talking about. I know on a Medicaid reimbursement basis, for certain types of transportation, there is a cut, I don't know whether that actually affects you, but we're looking to.
My name is Lynn Willie. I am here as a mom, and I have been representing my child, who is serially disabled, as Rachel, and all the other persons with disabilities. Throughout my son's life, his life's journey, actually, it was always our endeavor to have him taken care of in the event that we weren't here to care for him, and I didn't want my girls to have that responsibility. So, we were truly blessed, really blessed, to find an organization in the private sector, and thank you for supporting the private providers. Abilities Beyond Disabilities has been there for us always, and I concur with Rachel, there was a letter circulating by its own committee stating that there will be transportation costs, and he was very concerned about this. Throughout the three or four years in the past, we have been part of the state, well, parent task force, working with ARC, and there is a problem with the budget, the state and the private sector receive the same amount of budget, really, and the state only provides 20 percent, whereas the private providers provide 80 percent of the services. I did hear rumors tonight that BDS and the private sector are going to merge, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know what that means, and I'm being respectful. BDS is a state agency.
Right.
So, it wouldn't merge with something that wasn't a state agency.
Are they working together and all?
We have a lot of...
This is new that I just...
No, 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 I'm trying to be humble. First of all, you know, take a deep breath, and thank you for all the hard work that you put in on behalf of your child with a disability, and you know, we want to honor our commitment, that's what we're trying to do. And you found a great agency that you work with.
But I need to know, as well as other parents that are here that have children with disabilities, that their children are going to be careful when we're not here.
Well, I'm, for instance, I began the program by saying that we're putting more money into support of housing, and that for the first time, we're raising our support for a nonprofit community provider network in the state of Connecticut. That's why the two associations that represent that network are actually supporting what we're trying to do. I do have a $3.3 billion deficit, I'll be honest with you, but the mere fact that the two organizations that represent, actually represent the organization that you're using for your daughter is supporting the budget, son, excuse me, I apologize, is, I think, evidence that they understand that we are striving to be secure. Okay, thank you.
One more question, Governor, if this is very important, ask those or not, because we are getting close to the end. This is Jill.
Hi, Governor, thank you for the opportunity. I have a son who has vulnerable disabilities, I won't give him the story, but my question is this, it's a follow-up question to Lynn's question. How do we, as family members, self-advocates like Rachel, and providers of services, partner up with you to make sure that far beyond into the next 20 years, that our kid's future will be secure?
Well, I, listen, I can assure you that I'm going to do everything to my power to make your kid's future secure, but that's what I'm trying to do, in a context in which the $3.3 billion budget overwhelmingly, the nonprofit and community provider network is supporting what I'm doing, they understand what I'm trying to do. That's not to say that there are going to be, not going to be changes, because there is an inefficiency built into how state governments operate, and I've got to squeeze that inefficiency out. If our state is to be sustainable out into the future, and if we're ever going to begin the process of growing jobs again, we've got to change our behaviors. But understand this, that my commitment to people with disabilities is pretty strong.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm going to take two more questions, and then I'll ask the rest of the people that are online, so please see Aaron over here with your questions and concerns, and he will answer them, either by email or some other way, but I apologize, so the next week will please come up. Dan.
Hey, Dan. I wanted to thank you for being willing to at least put some tax increases on the table. I was preempted largely a few moments ago, but this is a high-income-earning state, incomes skewed to a relatively small number of very, very wealthy people, some of their income is not earned through a valuable social contribution, it's earned through not least, it's earned through political preference, through lobbying, through campaign contribution, and I hope you'll be tough, I just hope you'll be tough. I appreciate the willingness.
Okay, you know, I, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You know what, again, I want to say this, we're trying to find the right balance, we have a legislature. I will say to you that before I became governor, or before this budget gets passed, we had three brackets. I'm making it progressive in the sense that there are really eight brackets, and in each one of those brackets, wealthy people will pay more taxes, we have luxury taxes going into this budget, we have throwback rules for corporations, we have other rules that we're doing. I think some of that just doesn't get out over the messaging, and on the other hand, I will tell you that I'm a big believer in benchmarking and not putting the state at a competitive disadvantage. Some people would say, by being one of the few governors who's actually proposing raising taxes, I'm doing that, and I understand that that's their argument. I just hope that I don't get paralyzed by the folks that I'm trying to help in doing that. I could have done what other governors did, but I had to make decisions based on circumstances in Connecticut, understanding our overall reliance on property tax, and what sliding a $10, a $4.65 billion obligation, as is the case in New York, or a $3.6 billion obligation in the state of New Jersey, or in other states would have meant. Doesn't mean I have a right answer, and I've heard lots of people, lots of input, and I appreciate it all, and we're trying to find the right way to do it. Thank you.
Bye, Governor. The next one, we did, the governor of New Milford.
Bye.
Thank you for coming this evening. Unfunded public liabilities are all over the news today. A recent study estimated that the GAAP market value of Connecticut's unfunded pension and retiree health liability at $76 billion, or four times our totaling in budget. I know you will agree that $77 million of current pension funding is not a drop in the bucket when compared to even the official unfunded estimate of $48 billion. Last August, you said, quote, "It's the culmination of years of budget trickery and in refusal to address looming problems," unquote. And then you went on to say that you would establish a plan to, quote, "See that they are fully funded and that contributions are made on a yearly basis," unquote. If you consider it budget trickery to not include unfunded liabilities, why are they not included in your budget?
Actually, let's be very clear, we studied that, they are disclosed, and the reason that I'm funding pensions, that the full actuarial price tag of $877 million is to honor that commitment. But beyond that, you quoted GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. For the state, which the state of Connecticut requires the mayor and your superintendent of schools to report on, but has exempted itself, I'm changing it. So, Connecticut will be GAAP compliant, generally accepted accounting principles will apply, we will be transparent, we will document our long-term obligations, and we will fully fund those obligations. That's why people say, well, why, you know, hey, let me put it differently. A couple of years ago, the legislature, the governor, and it was the governor's initial suggestion, by the way, went into negotiations with the unions and said, well, we need some givebacks. The largest single giveback that they garnered two years ago was an agreement that the state didn't have to foot about $300 million into the pension plan. Guess who has to do that? Delaying a payment is not a saving. That's why going to GAAP is so important, and that's why I'm doing it, and that's why I'm putting my, I'm putting money, I can't say my money, I'm putting money behind what I'm saying. We are, for the first time in anyone's recent memory, fully funding our pension obligations to the tune of $877 million, and at the same time, that we're looking to restructure our arrangements with our employees. Both things are hard to do, I'm trying to do both. Thank you. It's great to be with you, 16 down and one more to go. Thank you very much, have a great night, Governor.